To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Paul Bank is president. Mrs. Franks.
President.
Mr. Spurlock.
Here.
Mr. Mike Denham.
Here.
Ms. Moser.
Here.
Ms. Swainy.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Mr. Ruske.
Here.
Mr. Paul Dunn. Here. All present.
Thank you. Public forum, I believe we have some people representatives here from GANZ Energy.
GANZ Energy, Springdale Energy LLC, Deloitte Ben Kelly here. Would you come to the front please?
I'll do my time closer.
And Mr. John Briskowski.
And Larry Keefe.
And Larry Keefe. From the Albert Allen Education Foundation. Springdale Energy is here this evening. They had reached out to our district over the summer and said that they would like to help support Albert Allen area school district. And their representatives here this evening are Ben Frederick and Kelly Schenker.
Yes.
Okay, and from the foundation, we have John Briskowski and Mr. Keefe. And they, the donation that Springdale Energy, GANZ Energy LLC has made to the district is a check in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars that they are plumbing through the foundation that would help touch as many of our students and teachers in the district as possible. Our initial plans for the generous donation is for teachers to be able to write many grants through the foundation for projects or things that they would like for their classroom to benefit their students, as well as helping out with scholarship opportunities for our students. And we also have plans of starting a pantry in some of our schools to help students in need, backpacks, to send home what we have with some food supplies, maybe some clothing and things of that nature. So I would like to personally, as well as the school board and the district, thank you for your generous donation that we are channeling through the Albert Allen Education Foundation to touch as many of our students and teachers in our community as possible. (applause)
I want to thank this group for making this particular donation. We've been existing for a number of years now and we've always given out a lot of scholarships and other types of projects for teachers to use in their classroom. And we intend to evolve through and do some more of that. And any positive effect we can have for the school district, we will do.
(applause)
It must be beautiful. (laughter)
Next, is there Sophie Frazee here?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Sophie Frazee, I'm from Oklahoma. I have grandparents of a child over A.L. Wilson. And I was rather dissatisfied that they decided not to have grandparents breakfast this year. I mean, it's something that the grandchildren enjoyed along with the grandparents. A.L. Wilson had a wonderful turnout. And we also supported the PTO while we were there. And I just wish that they could give a grievance statement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Why is it not on the grandparents breakfast?
I spoke to the principals of Mrs. Beazac and I believe it was decided that we were not doing grandparents breakfast this year due to it being multiple days each school. And that's basically part of our conversation back at the start of the school.
When you say multiple days, you're saying days that are put into work destruction?
Yes. I mean, I think it takes, you know, two, three days at each school depending on the number of people signing up for the grandparents breakfast to be able to get everybody served.
And does that speak to how popular it is and is it community involvement a really big thing that we strive for? Yes, it is. (applause)
Is there anyone else for public forum?
I don't think Mr. Gold is here, but the grandparents breakfast showed up as a negative catch blow. It cost the district money to put on that breakfast and we're not a hospitality service.
How much money are you talking about? Because I know that, I know the difference.
He showed us an expense report from the budget for the food service.
Do the grandparents have to pay for their meals?
Because I know there's a difference.
I see that they pay for their meals.
I mean, there should have been an option of at least discussion about, well, if we're going to do this, we need to raise the meal ticket by five or ten. Even if he, you know, it just seems like there was shame over the more discussion on that before the decision was made to cancel it.
Pla, I have grandparents go over the reading.
Well, I think we got stuff from the document, I'm sure.
They usually coordinate it when the school board.
Is there anyone else here for public forum this evening?
Good evening, my name is Leanne McColdy, I live at 50 Liberty Street in Smithfield. I have four children in the district to itself and to its Smithfield. About a month ago, I asked the board to address the rumor of a possible school closing and I asked for someone to take a look at the current condition of Smithfield's roof. And the board has had someone look at the current condition of the roof. And it was clear at the board meeting on Monday that we need a replacement and that we probably need a replacement or some kind of updating to the boiler system. With that, it was my understanding that the board is not moving to immediately fix the roof. And they are going to look at the district needs and numbers and possibly more consolidation before they make that decision. A few years ago, before the T-First twenty closing, the building we're actually currently standing in, I sent a letter to all of the board members with concerns about increased class sizes and specifically how that affects the learning support of special needs populations. And this is something that I want to revisit today. Eighteen percent of our district's children fall under the heading of special education. Mainstreaming has become the norm for many of these kids. Kids who used to be in a contained classroom now have the opportunity, under federal law, to be included as much as possible in a least restrictive environment. What I have seen personally with my son is that smaller class sizes with the help of an aide in his early education allow for more inclusion and more independence. The more you consolidate classes, the harder it is for these kids who are on the edge of making strides in mainstream and the harder it is for them to make gains in independent work. Our district is not anywhere near the current educational recommendations for K through three classes that are capped, if you look at the research, anywhere from sixteen to twenty kids in K through three setting. If we consolidate more, our averages of, say, twenty-five, my kids have seen about twenty-five as they've gone through Smithfield, if we consolidate more, they become more like thirty or thirty-five. You have effectively just taken away the opportunity for some of these kids to succeed in a mainstream environment. Some of them already aren't because there are already thirty kids in some of these classes. So that money that you're attempting to save today by increasing these class sizes turns into more money spent by society supporting this population in the future. Please do what's best for the kids and remember our extra special kids as you make your decisions. Thank you for your time. (applause)
Is there anyone else for public forum?
Good evening, my name is Bob Maykow, I'm sure all you know where I am. I'm presiding on the ballot for the election here in November on the four-year term and also the two-year term. I wasn't able to make it to the work session, however, I watched it on the internet when Mrs. Burnsworth was talking about the closing of Smithfield. And for those who don't know me, I grew up in this area, I worked thirty-seven years in the school district. I can speak in response to my specialty, which was health and physical education. I noticed this year, through some people that I know to teach, that we've downgraded again. When I started in nineteen sixty-nine, I started in the elementary school at Fair Chance Elementary in Smithfield. To this day, we have not improved that program one iota. I hope the other subjects have improved. But it seems as though last night, or Monday night, at the work session, we put our priorities in the wrong place. This is for education first. And I know a lot of you probably say, well, what's health and physical education? Well, in my estimation, it's most important. That's my training, that's what I did. And I did a wonderful job, in my estimation, and also in some of the students that I had in school, that I get accolades every year. I got one year, they kept cutting the program, cutting the program. It started out when I was at the high school in nineteen eighty-seven, when I moved from the elementary and the consolidation. Health class was a four-year. Then we instituted the driver's ed program. And I am certified to teach driver's education as well as the health and several other subjects. And if any of you know anything about the driver's education program, which a lot of people looked at me and said, you're a fool, why wouldn't you take that job and relax, do nothing? Which is about what happened in our school district as far as the program is concerned. The people that taught that program took a class out at Penn State from a gentleman that was ready to retire. And I started out there when I first graduated to get certified. I took one class. You'd go in that classroom, there'd be seventy people there. After the first break, you know how many would show up? Maybe ten. So it was a piecemeal thing that gets certified, don't learn anything, and go on. When that subject came up, I chose to stay in the classroom. My friends told me I was nuts. Why would you do that? Because I thought that that was more important. Today, going back to the elementary, you know much we've improved that program? Zero. At one point in time, when we were doing remodeling in our district, I went to the board and I pleaded with them. Because I started teaching on the stage, matter of fact, I taught on that stage, because the janitors would not move these tables. Anyhow, getting back to the main crux of my style is the fact that we are lost as far as education. When we compare it to everything else in this district, it seems like, as Mrs. Burnsworth was saying, sports, extracurriculars have to come in a triage down the line from education. And if I were to speak of what I would put in the triage, education's first. From there, the arts. And I know Mr. Page made a comment as far as how much money our athletes, in how many years was that, Mr. Page?
I think I said the last couple of years, I don't point the call, but it was athletics as well as the arts. It was both?
No, I'm speaking of athletics. Because I've kept track of a lot of, because I was involved in coaching for a while, I played sports in college, and the minor only, I don't know of too many people athletically in my career that have had Division One scholarships or Division Two scholarships, which is where the big money is.
We had two Division One last year.
And who was that?
A student called Cuchal, but it was both sports. We had one that went to Kent State on a full ride and one that went to San Francisco on a full ride, both Division Ones. Yeah, that was probably about a hundred thousand dollars reach kid, that's just the name two off top of my head.
Well, I would like to see, and you think that that is more important than the education factor. If indeed this was your company and you had to, as we have to do, seems like always, we have to, Mrs. Swainy, is there something wrong?
Your five minutes is up and I was debating whether we should go ahead and move on or not, because our policy is five minutes, we take a half hour to public forum. I announced this last month at the meeting.
Well, in other words, it's a moot point for me to stand up here and talk to you.
It is not.
And just like, just let me go to one more thing, this school board, this school board. You know, people ask me, why are you running? Because I'm stupid. At my age, I should be not anywhere close to this. However, when I think about it, this is the first time in many years that there's been an opportunity to make a change. And when I say make a change, I'm talking this number, and you know what that is. But the way it looks is not going to happen because of the people in this district are not aware of what's going on. I look at this school board and I go around here and I can ask you, if you can think back, why did you run? And as I look at it, there's very few people on here that did not benefit either.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, I know, that's it. I'll just say one word.
I'm not going to let you get to insult my fellow board members, I'm not. And Mrs. Hertzberger does have a daughter who received an athletics scholarship, one college, but about three or four. Is there anyone else for public forum?
And to clarify, you know, what Mr. Van Gold was speaking to, I didn't speak Monday night, in regards to, yes, you know, I would not advocate to eliminate sports nor the arts because our student population does benefit from it tremendously. And we do have a lot of students that do not only with college scholarships, they are students first, they're student athletes. And I've coached for many, many years, and I always stress academics first to all of my athletes on the football and wrestling team when I coached in the neighborhood school district as well as coaching in this district many years ago. But not only in scholarships, it gives the students a connection to middle school and high school who want to be there. So there are a lot of benefits to their participation in athletics and the arts, the band, the musicals and all. So my comment was I would not advocate to eliminate that. I think we need to educate the whole student. And with that comes not only academics, it comes to socialization and being a part of something, whether it be band, a sport, the arts, a club or organization that our district supports. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Just for clarification, though, when Mrs. Burnsworth spoke, she wasn't advocating for the elimination of these programs, many of the art programs. We have a drama teacher, we have art teachers, we have music teachers, we have band directors that are on salary that we're paying. What she was pointing out was the amount of money that we spend on paid coaches. And it was obvious that the majority of the board was not for that. And no wonder, I mean, just for example, on the agenda tonight, one board member's wife and son-in-law are both on the agenda for paid coaching positions. And you can go down this list, there's at least two family members.
Will that be your hand also?
What's that?
That be your hand also?
And you better believe I'm voting no on it for anti-nepotism reasons, but there are at least three people on this board.
You should stay and vote.
No, I could vote no on a family member anytime I want. If you want to check the ethical code, I'd be glad to talk to you about it.
All right, go ahead.
But you can go down this list here and there are at least, both of them have family members that have been on extracurricular paid positions, Mrs. Swainy's daughter's gotten paid, no wonder the board doesn't want to do away with paid athletics. Nobody advocates for the money.
My daughter was on this list because she has a G.
I'm talking about, she's not getting paid for the career grad.
Why are you trying to justify it?
Does she not get paid for that?
There was never anyone else who applied.
But what I'm saying is, is that this is more about dancing, this is more about closing those programs, this is about seeking volunteers for the community. I guarantee they would be volunteering to the community to fill these. We were talking about a hundred dollars or a hundred thousand dollars plus on the event which is athletics.
I'm just kidding.
Is there anyone else for public forum tonight?
I appreciate your comment, I just am not that confident that we could find volunteers to do all of those things. That's a huge commitment in time and I just don't think it's possible.
And I appreciate that. And there are many things that we do that we say, we don't know how this is going to work, but we're going to try it on a trial basis. And when we're making the tough financial decisions that we're making, including possibly closing down one of our Blue River School, should we not be exploring these? So if we did it for a year or two and we're not able to fill these, is it not worth at least trying to attempt to save a hundred thousand plus a year? I don't know if it would work or not, but what would the harm be in trying? And you might be pleasantly surprised if the people that step forward and say, you know what, I care about the community enough that I'm going to do this, I care about this program enough that I'm going to do this and you don't have to pay me. Or if the PTO, or not the PTO, but whatever booster for that particular program said, you know what, we're going to raise funds to give this volunteer coach X amount of money, that would be up to them. But at this point, we have to make extremely tough financial choices. And when it comes to trying to save the quality of education at the base, at the very beginning that is so important for our students who are going through our school district, it seems to me that we have to prioritize that over paying coaches. That's where I'm coming from. And I do appreciate that, that might be, it might not be on show because we don't have community members, but I think that it's a combination of these two.
Anyone else for public forum? Mr. Briskowski?
I want to thank all of you board members and administrators out there for serving. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a little something for public forum and it's concerning cyberbullying. Actually, I really don't, I have a losing paper, I just kind of buzzed through it. But this caught my eye, it was in the Herald Standard, and I thought it was well worth reading. At your age, what example do you want to set for children? A Delargue report from the National Center for Education Statistics, the research arm of the U.S. Education Department, found that twenty percent of students between twelve and eighteen were bullied and fifteen percent were bullied online in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year. When the data is updated, the number stat is likely to grow. The advent of social media in particular has made the potential for bullying constant. Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Snapchat, and dozens of other social media apps make it nearly impossible to do what most kids did when they were being picked on twenty years ago, go home and get away from it. Those who ever see our school districts in twenty nineteen or past, with figuring out how to overcome the problem, often their hands are tied because the conduct doesn't happen on school time. It's a trend that has to stop and as adults, we need to lead the way. First and foremost, by example, including monitoring, monitoring our online, monitoring our online conduct. If we can't, as adults, get on board with being civil and decent online, how do we expect our children to do this? We use this space recently to urge behavior and try to be diplomatic. Adults are not without faults and can make poor decisions with their words. Now, let us be plain, adults should behave like well adults. Raise legitimate concerns respectfully. Stop the name-calling and swearing. Stop the blind item posts on social media that take personal digs of people, their names or their appearances. The First Amendment gives you the right to do it, but it doesn't make what you're doing right. It's easy to be mean behind the screen, but all that does is make the poster the equivalent of a schoolyard bully. And that's not the example we should be setting for the children who look to us to show them how to act. For the last two years, I have been bullied on social media.
That's true.
It was the comment that was made, that was put on a Facebook page that I did not make at the walk session, I have been threatened with bodily harm. I have just been to my wit's end with it and it was just really, probably a coincidence that I went through and I read this article. So I want all of you to remember the words, do hurt. I have to remember this too. And I would just like to say, we need to be kind to one another. We can discuss, it can turn into a heated argument, but at the end of the day, we need to do the right thing. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public forum?
Mrs. Swainy, I appreciate the article you just read. You addressed me before the board meeting and commented to me that I made a comment on social media on Mrs. Burnsworth.
I said I thought, and it came from you.
Okay, well, I just went through publicly, I went through the post and that was not made. I did not make it. I wish you would have given me the opportunity before the board meeting for me to show you that before you walked away from me.
Well, someone shared, close all the schools down, I don't care. They said that I said that and it was not set.
What?
And it came from, right here it is.
Is my name attached to that?
It was shared by somebody, I believe it was put on Mrs. Prupus' Facebook page first.
If, I would like you to give me the opportunity to prove that was not me.
Well, if you find out, we know how to get them to tell you.
I'm publicly telling you right now, I did not share anything that would cause anyone bodily harm. I have not slandered, I have not said anything in any posts that I've made on Facebook on my political page nor my personal page. So I apologize that if someone has done that to you. I'm a Christian woman and I would not do that for anyone. Bullying is not right. It's not right in our school, it's not right as adults. I work as a nurse and I'm a Christian and I don't believe in treating anyone with any disrespect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to secretarial, entering to executive session as needed.
Madam President, there is a need to enter into executive session for student confidentiality.
Any motion please?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, in your voting booth. Motion?
Aye.
All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Under secretarial, an executive session was held on Monday, October fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, from seven sixteen PM to eight twenty-four PM for personnel, real estate, and student confidentiality. See, adopt agenda as presented. Is my name attached to that?
It was shared by somebody. I believe it was put on Mrs. Krupa's Facebook page first.
If, I would like you to give me the opportunity to prove that was not me.
Well, if you find that out, we know how to get in touch with you.
I'm publicly telling you right now, I did not share anything that would cause anyone bodily harm. I have not slandered, I have not said anything in any post that I've made on Facebook on my political page nor my personal page. So I apologize that, that someone has done that to you. I'm a Christian woman, and I would not do that for anyone. Bullying is not right. It's not right in our school, it's not right as adults. I work as a nurse, and I'm a Christian, and I don't believe in treating anyone with any disrespect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to secretarial, entering to executive session as needed.
Madam President, there is a need to enter into executive session for student confidentiality.
Any motion, please? Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You're voting to change the subject. Do you want to have a motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under secretarial, an executive session was held on Monday, October 14th, 2019, from 7:16 p.m. to 8:24 p.m. for personnel, real estate, and student confidentiality. C, adopt agenda as presented.
I'm actually, I'm making a motion to amend the agenda, to add an item, to move forward with the pending specifications for the new government's development score.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Amending the agenda.
Amending the agenda.
To add for, as a voting item, to move forward with the pending specifications for group, and, um, skip.
Yes. We're just, what, the other gentleman, you giving to us?
Madam President, this is a, this is a large sum of money. I hear that we need to, to make sure that we have a due diligence as far as spending in the neighborhood.
I agree with that. We don't know what, we do not know what the cost, the final cost would be. And it's a good business, we should have been told, we said, we are a business. I do not think myself, I would, it's a good business decision to personally put the cart before the horse. I think we need to have the information and then have a vote, but we did have a, to amend the agenda, we had a first and a second.
And I just want to say too, the gentleman from the Garland Company indicated that if we're going to do the work next summer, that it was ideal to start the process now or within the next month. And he also indicated that there was a fitting process, that you have 90 days after you start that, and Elizabeth could confirm this, but we don't have to then accept it. So this is giving the ball, and we're moving in the right direction. So just because we're going this route doesn't mean that we definitively have to do it.
I still feel the way I do, so we have the second to amend the agenda, so we can take a vote. Am I correct?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
This is the end. Would we, so how do you roll call?
I don't know if she was able to.
Okay. Who do, who do you roll call?
Mr. Howard?
No.
Mr. Bruski?
Yes. Only because we can reject the bids if the numbers aren't favorable.
Mr. Paul Dunn? Mr. Mike Denham?
No.
Mrs. Moser?
Yes.
Mrs. Swain?
No.
Mrs. Krupa?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Blake?
No.
Mrs. Franks?
Yes.
That fails by default.
Okay, the motion carries. Moving on, our three minutes of meetings held on September 18th, 2019, and October 8th, 2019, as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Financial, except treasurer's report, including tax collections for September 2019, preliminary financial statements as presented. We need to have this.
Financial summary for September says our beginning balance is $4,742,498.82. Our receipts for the month are $6,374,495.23. Total disbursements, average operations per month in the general fund, $5,049,809.41, for an ending whole balance of $6,067,176.64.
Okay, now, you can have a motion.
A move, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Grant permission to pay the following bills and payroll for October 2019. Bills, utilities, insurance, and contractual obligations paid at the end of the previous month in the amount of $3,465,832.28.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Current month general fund bills in the amount of $1,125,048.39.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Except the activity and house report is presented by John Prinsen.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant permission to pay the following through capital projects. I will do this as a mic, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Grant permission to increase the substitute custodian hourly rate to $10.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant permission to pay the following through capital projects. Phil Turk USA Incorporated, $36,668.71. High School Senate Term File Payables. K2 Engineering, $1,200. Administration Office Suicide Project. Total, $37,868.71.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I just want to point out, with respect to the term, we entered into that contract, although I voted no on it initially, the board majority approved that, we are contractually obligated at this point to, to K R debt, so that's why I'm voting yes for that.
Mr. Dunn, did you vote no on vote 1?
Yeah, I know, on number one.
So I believe they passed it.
Yes, they passed it.
Moving on to correspondence.
I would like to take this time to once again thank Springdale Energy LLC for their generous contribution to the Albergard Education Foundation to benefit our students and teachers of the Albergard Elementary School District.
Thank you. Solicitor's report?
Just a quick item. Although we went into executive session for student confidentiality immediately preceding, during our meeting, excuse me, we also discussed a potential litigation being filed on behalf of the school district and by personnel.
Are we able to say publicly what the county is telling us at this point about this one?
Yes, it's a lie.
So I don't know if, um, go ahead. Yeah, I mean, did they talk to you?
Basically, they said that the information has been transferred to the county treasurer's seat or office. And I believe it's just the preparation of them, meaning the procedure setup, and they said that they would estimate a three to four week period before the checks start going down.
Administration was informed that the county had returned this issue over to their county comptroller's office, and that they are hoping to make a possible distribution to begin within three to four weeks. The instructions I've been given is that if that doesn't occur, then we should initiate a lawsuit to attempt to collect our money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Curriculum and instruction. Approve second reading about updated policy, six, ten, subject to a quotation.
Out of the resident, I'd like to make a motion to waive the third reading and write this in a law.
Second. All those in favor? Would you want that?
Aye.
Now we, okay, do you want to do a backflip, Mr. Bruski?
No, I believe the original motion was a combination to vote for second reading and waive the third reading.
Okay.
So that's sort of passed.
Okay, so it's number, okay. Personnel, grant Christine Jerome cafeteria employee a leave of absence from September 19th, 2019, to approximately December 13th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant Sherry Dugan paid and unpaid leave of absence from September 27th, 2019, to November 1st, 2019.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant Janelle Miyakovich a leave of absence from September 27th, 2019, to approximately November 15th, 2019. Acured sick and personal days shall be used during leave as permitted by the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant Mary Communell a leave of absence from November 1st, 2019, to approximately January 6th, 2020. Acured sick days shall be used during leave as permitted by the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hire Autumn DZAC for the two-hour floating cafeteria position based at Smithville Elementary School according to contract.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant permission to reinstate the middle school athletic director position.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Yes, let's do a roll call.
Swain?
Yes.
Mrs. Moser?
No.
Mr. Denham?
Oh, yes.
Mr. White Denham?
Yes.
Mr. Bruski?
No.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Corbick?
Yes.
Mrs. Franks?
No.
Mr. Kipniskow?
No.
The motion passes, six, excuse me, five, four.
Thank you. Award renewed the following high school coaches for 2019-2020 season pending receipt of all proper documents. Jordan Alderson, assistant basketball coach.
So moved. So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, and I'm opposed for two reasons, because this is a board member of Sonoma, and it's a paid position, and until we fix the leak in Smithville's profile, I think we should be paying for these athletic positions.
Well, I understand he's voting, and also, he's volunteered for the last five.
This is a paid position.
So he's earned his position.
Is this a paid position?
It is a paid position.
If it were volunteer positioning?
He volunteered for the last five years, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, what you did.
The motion passed. Award renewed.
Do you need me to group?
Award renewed following middle school coaches for the 2019-2020 season pending receipt of all proper documents. Kristen Donovan, assistant volleyball hall. Jeff Rush, head wrestling. Adam Simon, assistant house. Any motion?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, and I'm opposed for the same reason, nepotism for number one, because it's the school board members' lives, and all three of them because they're paid positions, paid athletic coaching positions.
Hey, I believe the motion will pass.
I have to, I have to strike. On number, on number one.
Reinstate William Barnum from part-time to full-time transportation director and revise his contract to reflect the change in status, subject to final review of the district's legislature.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, opposed.
Opposed.
We'll take a roll call, please.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Bruski?
No.
Mr. Mike Denham?
No.
Mrs. Swain?
Yes.
Mrs. Moser?
No.
Mr. Bruski? Mrs. Krupa, sorry.
No.
Mrs. Franks?
I have a question, was this a recommendation to state?
The state did have concerns because the district was our size and had a part-time transportation record, yes.
So the state is encouraging us?
They do not make recommendations, however, they said it was a red flag because we have a district this size, with the number of buses we do, and we didn't have the full-time transportation. The state cannot, so you understand, the state cannot require you. They can't make recommendations if we didn't have a concern for our.
I have a question too. When we did our economic furloughs, didn't we have to show that there's an appropriate number of, like administration to teach ratio to do that? And isn't, haven't there been multiple, and then, so the middle school athletic position was administration, administrator that was in that economic furlough, and this is another one that was included in that ratio? Is that correct, to do that?
We have, keep in mind, we only ended up with one professional for the furlough.
So it's not going to affect that ratio?
It's not going to affect the ratio.
That disposition, Palmer, disposition was also part-time, Chris, he would have like six weeks, four to six weeks.
It would be reduced from what he was prior to going part-time. It would be, instead of a 261 day, it would be 215. He would not work the month of July, and he would only work 10 days after school was out. So if school was out June 3rd, he would work 10 days after June 3rd. And if he does it for the rest of June, all of July, and start August 1st, the first Monday in August to start the bus routes and all, you know, all of the stuff that gets done for the start of the year. All right, thank you.
My vote is yes.
Your vote is yes? Do you need one more vote?
Mr. Corbick?
Yes, so it passes five, four.
Motion carries. Motion to create elementary and middle school head teacher positions pursuant to the current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Passes. Administrative, grant permission to add the following substitutes pending receipt of all proper documents. Non-professional Tracy Ricks, Chelsea Jacobs, Tina Murphy, Rebecca Clark. Professional Megan Hall.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG North Cafeteria Gym to AG North A3 Formal Dance Committee on September 27th, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for a dance. The contact person being Amanda Johnson.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG South Cafeteria Gym to AG Middle School Cheroo Room on November 1st, 2019, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for a dance. The contact person being Lori Ferg.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG South Cafeteria Gym to AG Cross Country Roosters on February 14th, 2020, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for a dance. Contact person, Tammy Fixler.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG South Cafeteria Gym to AG South Band on March 27th, 2020, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for a dance. The contact person being Mary Kendall.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG High School Cafeteria to AG Education Foundation on March 28th, 2020, times to be announced for a character breakfast in conjunction with the district musical, Judy Zimsa.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant use of AG High School Gym to Alliance Volleyball Club on November 3rd and 10th, 2019, between 2:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m., and November 5th and 12th, 2019, between 4:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. for tryouts. The contact being Marissa Hart.
Opposed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider preliminary approval of AG High School Band, Drama, and Choral Department for overnight trip to Virginia Beach, Virginia, on May 1st through May 3rd, 2020, at no cost to the district.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider preliminary approval of AG High School softball team for trip to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, for the Ripken Experience Spring Training in March 2020, at no cost to the district.
So moved.
Contact person being. That's okay, can you do a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Grant permission to renew HVAC Mechanical Equipment Preventive Maintenance and Repair Service Agreement with combustion service and equipment effective November 1st, 2019, at a cost of $50,220. This price represents no increased cost from the current agreement.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Adjournment, the next adjournment meeting will be held November 20th, 2019, in the First Lady School Cafeteria. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.